UBSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
States of America, and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God and visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment, Mandy.
Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Board of Directors on any subject matter that is not on the meeting agenda and is within the board's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comment periods are limited to three minutes per person, and the total amount of time for public comment is 15 minutes. Persons participating by way of video conference or teleconference shall ensure their audio is muted at all times except when the board chair announces public comment periods. At those designated times, members of the public wishing to speak shall enable their audio and state their name for the record. When multiple members of the public wish to speak, the clerk will determine the order of speakers and announce their names accordingly. To ensure proper conduct, the board reserves the right to mute the audio and video of any members of the public violating generally accepted principles and decorums of official public meetings. And I did not receive any in-person public comments, and there are no virtual public comments.
Right. Thank you, Mandy. So I understand the agency staff, from the agency staff, there's a request to add an item to today's agenda. Andrew, please present the item.
Thank you, Chair Messick. Good morning, directors. This is a rare late addition to the agenda, so I'll talk you through the purpose of it and how the mechanics of adding the item work. So this action concerns two items. First, a request to add Resolution 2025-09 to the agenda, which requires a two-thirds vote. That's five directors today. And item two, considering approval of Resolution 2025-09, which is necessary to complete escrow for the agency's purchase of Yuba County Assessor's parcel number 006160060. This is the Hirsch property that we've discussed on prior board items, including the last board meeting. So Board of Directors previously authorized the acquisition of the property, which is about 153 acres located northwest of DeGare Point Dam. Escrow is ready to close. Last Friday, the escrow officer handling the transaction notified agency staff that a certificate of acceptance as provided for under the government code is required to complete the transaction. Draft Resolution 2025-09 would authorize agency staff to execute the certificate of acceptance, so escrow may close likely today or tomorrow. Government Code Section 54954.2 subdivision B2 in the Brown Act allows an item to be added to the meeting agenda by a two-thirds vote if, one, there's a need for immediate action, and, two, the need came to the attention of agency staff after the meeting agenda was posted. There is an immediate need to act on Resolution 2025-09. The property purchase agreement provides for a deadline for escrow to close, and execution of a certificate of acceptance is the last action necessary for the grant deed to be recorded and escrow to close. Need for this item came to the attention of agency staff after the meeting agenda had been posted. We posted last Thursday afternoon, and we received the call on Friday afternoon. Therefore, the Brown Act authorizes the Board of Directors to add this item to the agenda by a two-thirds vote, and then approval of the resolution requires a majority vote of the board. So two actions are requested. First, vote to add the item, and then, second, assuming the first vote passes, a vote on 2025-09.
I'll move to add the item.
Are there any questions from the board? I'm going to read this next thing. There are no questions from the board. I understand we need to take two votes. First, on a motion to add the resolution to our agenda, and, second, on a motion whether to approve the resolution. There is a motion to add the Resolution 2025-09 to the agenda because it requires immediate action. The agency staff learned about the need after the agenda was posted. So we have a motion and a second to add this item to the agenda. A roll call vote, please.
Director Bishop?
Yes.
Director Bradford?
Yes.
Director Vasquez?
Yes.
Director Fier?
No.
Director Messick?
Yes.
Director House?
Yes.
Director Matthews?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Now, are you going to add more, Andrew? And now we're going to vote on the agenda item?
That's correct, Chair Messick.
Okay, so now the motion's been adopted to add Resolution 2025-09. Is there any further public comment on that item? Or from the directors? I entertain a motion to...
Vote to approve.
I'll second.
All right, and this is just a simple majority, so all in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now consent items. Consent item, alls we have is approval of minutes.
Who approves?
By the second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's approved. Discussion items. Received presentation from Yuba County Resource Conservation District.
Thank you. This morning, we have a presentation from DJ Baker, the Executive Director of the Yuba County Resource Conservation District. Resource Conservation Districts are special districts of the State of California, locally governed with their own appointed or elected independent Board of Directors. RCDs implement projects on public and private lands and educate landowners and the public about resource conservation. Back in 2022, the Yuba Water Board voted to start granting, and it was a multi-year grant, funds to the RCD to reestablish it and reinvigorate it in the Yuba County area. So this morning, DJ has come to us to give us an update on what's happening. DJ?
Good morning, all of you. Thank you so much for giving me some time to speak this morning. Many of you have already heard this presentation, but I'm glad to be back giving it to a few more with the Yuba Water Agency board members. My name is DJ Baker, and I am the Executive Director of the Yuba County Resource Conservation District. I'm here today to give a presentation of what we have accomplished since our reinvigorating time. But before I get into that, I want to just give you all background about me. I was born and raised in Yuba County. In fact, I've spent all but three years of my life in Yuba County. Most of that time has been in the Yuba County foothills. I attended Foot Hill Intermediate School, Marysville High School, played Little League Baseball at North Yuba, Little League Field in Browns Valley, things like that, you know. So being here is near and dear to my heart. It's been a long journey to get where I am today. Right after high school, I started construction, volunteered with the Lomarica Browns Valley Fire Protection District shortly after turning 18, and ended up working for Cal Fire for a few seasons. Unfortunately, a job-related injury took me out of firefighting and sent me back to construction. But as it turns out, a wrist injury makes it pretty difficult to swing a hammer all day. So I went back to school, earned a degree in wildlife and fish conservation biology from University of California-Davis, and shortly after that, landed in the world of the Resource Conservation Districts. So it was quite a surprise to me to find out that there was an RCD in Yuba County, and it gave me the opportunity to essentially work in my own backyard. Here you can see a picture of myself and my family. This is what a typical weekend looks like. There's always stuff to do around the property, around the house. And in the background, you can see a house that we just finished building in the Yuba County foothills. So it's safe to say our roots are set for a while. But I didn't come to talk about all about me today. Let's get into the Yuba County Resource Conservation District. The YCRCD assists landowners and managers in providing stewardship of the county's natural resources and educating stakeholders and policymakers about the county's natural resource base. In the year 2019, thanks to the Board of Supervisors at that time and some other state agencies, and the Yuba Water Agency, the RCD was reinvigorated after several years of what I like to call hibernation. So during this time, right around the coronavirus pandemic, it gave the Board of Directors time to rediscover what this new RCD was going to look like. And some goals that they came up with were to reduce erosion, sedimentation, pollution, and reduce fire risk in Yuba County, provide a forum and facilitate for the resolution of these different conservation issues, assist with wildfire hazard mitigation and wildlife protection and enhancement, promote recreation and tourism, increase farm, range, and forest sustainability, and improve its own organizational viability. So what have we been up to since that time of reinvigoration? I started in the summer of 2023, so shortly after, much of the support came from the Yuba Water Agency. And since then, we've been up to lots of partnership development, project planning, and lining out those projects, looking to become more and more involved in Yuba County, getting our presence known again among the residents, and the never-ending pursuit of funding. We are 100% grant-funded as of the moment, and that takes up a majority of our time. So one of the projects that we have going on that we've been successful at is a cow recycle farm and ranch cleanup grant. What this grant pays for is the removal of illegally dumped material on farm and ranch land. It secures the location with fences and gates, and it actually provides the farmer with a game camera that gives them 24-hour-a-day, seven-days-a-week monitoring of the site. Game cameras are really fancy now. They'll send a picture right to the landowner whenever somebody crosses its path, so they can notify law enforcement to get them out there to try and stop the activity. Here we have some before and after shots of some cleanup that we've done. Here's an example of the types of gates that we have put up to help prevent the dumping in the future. More before and after of cleanup. We've also been involved in the planning and pulling off a volunteer day in Oregon House. We called this the Community Climate Action Day. It was held at YES Charter Academy up in Oregon House. They have a five-acre plot approximately next to the school that they purchased, and we got together with some other partners, the Yuba Watershed Protection and Fire Safe Council, Say Love, Keep California Beautiful, just to name a few, and were accompanied by about 46 volunteers from the community to help make that area more wildfire resilient. We're actually going to be having another one of these days later this month at the same location. Here's a before and after of that project. As you can see, the before, all the limbs are there. The after, they're all on the ground, ready to be chipped. We've also been in the pursuit of bigger projects to help with fuel reduction in the Yuba County foothills. Since beginning, we have acquired funding from two Cal Fire grants. One was for the Cal Fire Wildfire Prevention Grant that will treat approximately 100 acres off of Moonshine Road. The total for that grant was $490,000, and a wildfire resilience grant, which will also treat 100 acres. This one is geared towards small landowners, and we are setting a minimum of five landowners and that 100 acres, hoping to achieve more. And that is approximately $485,000. Here's some maps. As you can see, we recently changed the name of the wildfire resilience program. It's no longer the Yuba County Land Owner Assistance Program. That was recently changed, but we have the Yuba Foothills Hazard Fuel Reduction. But you can kind of get an idea of where these two projects are. There's Bullards Bar Reservoir on the left and on the right, adjacent to Collins Lake. So this is what a snapshot of what our annual projection income is going to look like in the future. As you can see, we're gaining momentum, and the upward trend is always nice to see. Here we have a comparison of the past total income versus total expenses going on towards the future. And if you notice, looking at this chart, we can see that we're barely making it by. And in fact, in 2024, we were a little bit in the hole. As we move into the fiscal year 2025-26, we're finally gaining a little ground. But I should point out that that difference there is only about $12,000. So how did we get to where we are today? Thanks to the help, support from the Yuba Water Agency and Department of Conservation, this capacity building grant, the Regional Fire and Forest Capacity Program, the mouthful, all these acronyms. But this was a capacity building grant that provided us $170,000 for two years. And in this two years, the $170,000 covered grant research, administrative duties, board meeting preparation, partnership development, and collaboration, and attending different meetings to discuss projects with partners. Today, after that grant has expired, we still have grant research, administrative duties, board meeting prep, and all-important partnership and collaboration, as well as an annual audit that we have to pay for every year. None of these are directly covered with the grant funds that we're trying to pursue. But there is a way that we can make this work out. It's called an indirect rate. What happens in grant funding, you have your project-specific funds and your non-project-specific funds. So let's just say, for an example, we charge an indirect rate of 12%. Normally, it's 10, but there's rumor that it's been going up for the minimum. So we'll say for this example, it's 12%. And we have an employee working a 40-hour work week. 20 of those hours are going to be administrative duties. The other 20 are going to be project-specific, grant project-specific duties. And let's just say for this example, we have $400 of material we had to purchase for this grant-specific project that we can charge to. So in that work week, we can charge $800, half of the 40-hour work week, 20 times 40 is 800, and then the other 400 for the material that we supplied. So if we do the math, 12% of 800 comes back to $96. That $96 is intended to cover the $400, or 20 hours at $20 an hour, of that administrative time. So as you can see, there's quite a difference here that we would have to make up with a large reserve. We currently don't have that large reserve, so we would need your support. Financial support is needed to keep the Resource Conservation District in Yuba County and help ensure the Yuba County RCD's viability. We're asking for $60,000 to $80,000 annually for the next few years, mostly to cover staff time that's geared toward those hours that cannot be charged directly towards a grant. We're hoping to kind of mirror the support that's been given to the Yuba Watershed Protection and Fire Safe Council in that regard. And now would be a good time for questions, if you have any for me, or I'll feel free to stick around to the end of the meeting to address any questions as well.
Through the chair.
Say that one more time for me?
Administrative costs for the last three years.
Our administrative costs? I can only go back to 2023 because that's when I started. Our administrative cost is about $75,000.
Thank you.
Through the chair. What's a few years? Three to five?
Three to five, yeah.
Okay. There we go, five. Just for a good round number. You haven't been getting a lot of support, so...
That would be fabulous.
Okay.
Yes, I just wanted to point out that this was agendized for a presentation, not for actually awarding a grant. And so if you'd like to give staff direction to work with DJ to go through our grant program, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay. I'll go ahead and suggest that. Staff, take care of that.
So for our... There were other contractual expenses along with that, so we would create a forest management plan, perform, pay a contractor to the work. I budgeted $2,800 an acre for the contractor work, and roughly $3,000 per parcel as a baseline for the forest management plan, plus an additional $10 an acre. Then we had budgeted items for education and outreach, things like that, mileage, to hire staff to run that program. And I'm more than willing to provide a more detailed budget, if you would like, as well for that. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To clarify, so when you do do that, what's the difference between what you guys do and the Fire Safe Council does? Because it almost seems like we're doing two staffs and two forest... We're spending a lot of money on people that aren't actually masticating properties, and maybe we could consolidate and get more money boots on the ground.
Yeah, that's a great question. And to be honest with you, the first six months in my position, I spent a lot of time trying to figure out that answer. And what I found out was, you know, we were coming in kind of late to the game. You have huge players like the Yuba Water Agency and the Fire Safe Council and different private owners, Sillers Brothers, things like that, all doing this work. So we had to find our spot to fit in. And where we found that spot to be was treatment outside of the defensible space. Fire Safe Council, they focus on the defensible space and home hardening. Other organizations focus on huge 1,000-acre plots of land. We are focusing on outside of the defensible space. Say, a landowner in the foothills has five acres, right? There are still approximately four acres that are left untreated. Once that acreage gets treated, it can be a more effective way of hardening that entire community versus the threat of wildfire. Is that kind of...
Yeah, that does. It explains a lot.
Okay.
And then my other question was, you have 100 acres at Regent Way, but we need to do probably 1,000 acres at Regent Way. So how can we get more money to these contractors to get more acres done?
Yeah, I have a grant in for the earwin process right now with the Yuba Water Agency. We are pursuing federal funding with the Department of Justice through a REPI program. It's an environmental readiness program through Beale Air Force Base. There are several other avenues that we're trying to pursue funding from also.
All right.
It's an ongoing battle.
Yeah. And that explains why the cost for the staff is there, because you're constantly looking for and applying for grants.
Right.
All right. Any other questions from the directors? Anyone from the audience have a question? Charles, are you going to sit there and not come up with one thing? Come on, come on up. You drove all the way down here. We want to hear something from you.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
You want me to go to the other one?
Oh, I think we could hear you.
Is this working?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm Charles Sharp. I live in Oregon House, and I'm on the board. And I wanted to be on this board because it goes after the fuels reduction beyond the 100-foot perimeter, and that was a missing piece that we're not addressing up in the foothills. So I went to the Board of Supervisors, got appointed to the board, because I wanted to help work on that aspect. And that's what I'm concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay. And you're currently already working with the Yuba Water staff for a grant, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Managers' report. Willie's not here. Do you have anything to report?
I do. I'm glad you noticed I wasn't Willie. Willie is back in Washington, DC. But we do have a report. But since I'm not Willie, I'm going to mix it up a little and do things a little bit differently, and start with a maintenance report of what's going on at Narrows 2. As you recall, in Willie's last report, he said that we were in outage in Narrows 2. And we've had a challenge with a very complicated process. So I actually asked Keon Summers, our Director of Power Systems, to come and explain it, because I know there'll be questions, and I know I won't be able to answer them.
Excellent. Good morning, board staff and members of the public. My name's Keon Summers. I'm the Director of Power Systems. Before I get into the details of the actual incident that we had, I wanted to make sure and set the stage a little bit. At the Narrows 2 powerhouse, we have a flow meter installed inside the tunnel there. It's critical to make sure we make the right flow releases, make sure you meet all of our environmental compliance, know how much power we're generating, and a variety of other reasons. Our install in this tunnel is unique. I've never seen anything quite like it. Typically, when you put a flow meter in, it's mounted on the outside of the pipe. All the wires run outside the pipe. Unfortunately, at Narrows 2, that's not possible, given the configuration of the powerhouse. So everything's mounted inside the tunnel. All the wires are inside the tunnel. All the sensors are inside the tunnel. It's just how it is out there. What that means, though, is that all of that equipment is exposed to the water all the time. For the last year or so, we've had some questionable readings coming out of the flow meter. So we decided to e-water the tunnel and figure out what was going on. When we got in there, the damage was a bit more extensive than we had expected. Many of the wires were broken. The conduit that was holding the wire to the tunnel walls was broken and needed to be replaced. So we went in, we installed new anchors and new conduit. During that process, we had some problems with the new anchors. It got a bit more difficult to install than we had expected. It's taking a bit more time. So what we've done is re-engineered the anchoring system to hold everything onto the wall, and then we're installing it right now. What that means is we have about a two-week delay, and the outage has been extended a little bit. That's where we are. Any questions about what's going on?
About how much revenue we lose?
I don't have a great answer for that right now. Power prices are really low right now, as they are typically in the spring. We're even seeing negative prices, and it's not dramatic right now. Now is the right time for this work to happen.
Thank you.
Through the chair. You mentioned that it was on the inside, and all the wiring was on the inside. Is there a reason you don't put it on the outside this time?
So when the pipe comes through the mountain right there, there is really no outside. It comes through a tunnel, and it's buried. So it's not physically possible.
Now you know why it's inside, right?
Yep.
Had to ask some questions.
Yeah. I do want to thank the crews. I mean, they've been working six days a week, 10, 12 hours a day. It's been an incredible lift to get this thing back online. So great work by everyone out there that's working on it. So great work by everyone out there that's working on it. I'll pass that along. Thank you.
Thanks, Keon. Other items from Power Systems is from the engineering update, and that's the headquarters is coming along nicely. There's HVAC now in Building A and B and C. Communications tower, ground grid is nearly complete, and everything... And Hillbush continues to maintain stormwater controls. There's more detail in the actual report you have, but it's coming along nicely. The New Bullards Bar Dam Crest Road Repair's estimated schedule has been updated due to the forecasted weather from late March to mid-April, to early April to late April. So the weather is kind of messing up the schedule. The project award was given to Malcolm International LLC on February 26th. It's an approved FERC project. And the project is to repair various cracks on the road crest, the road crest of the New Bullards Bar Dam to limit future deterioration. In operations, Colgate Units One and Two and Narrows Unit One are all online and performing New Bullards Bar Reservoir is at about eight hundred forty-nine thousand acre feet. That's about a hundred and twenty percent of average. For more on the weather and the water coming in, go ahead and look at the graphs in the Couple more updates. One is from Human Resources. We will be hosting a board governance training on May 8th from nine to three here in the board chambers. I sent you an email about this, but wanted to make sure it went out to the public. This is a training for any elected official in Yuba County. And so we have sent out an email to all the elected officials from all the different districts, the cities, the school districts, the special districts. And it's going to be, of course, a more generic training than, for instance, you've had with Mitch Rosenberg. But this will be about best practices for a board, a little bit on, you know, the legalities of... I'm sorry, I didn't mean to roll my eyes at the Brown Act. It's a really good act, sorry. But it won't be like last year's, I think it was last year's training, we spent pretty much the whole morning on the Brown Act. This one's going to be a little bit of the legal part of it, but more about what are just good practices? Then we'll break for lunch, and then in the afternoon, get into small groups and get to know other elected officials a little better, and also talk about some actual hypotheticals and discuss those through. So we have asked Don Ashton, who's the former COA of El Dorado County, and Jack Hughes of Lieber Cassidy. You recall, Jack was here last year doing the training, but also he represents us in union negotiations. He's with Lieber Cassidy. So if you are interested in attending, please just let Mandy know, and she'll make sure to get you on the list.
Terry, could I ask a question about that?
Sure, of course.
You said break for lunch. We're not providing lunch?
Yes, we are providing lunch.
We're providing lunch, okay.
We found if we offer lunch, it attracts more people. And we also don't...
I know a guy that'll go anywhere for free food.
We also don't lose them for the afternoon.
Yeah. Okay. I was going to suggest, if not that we get a couple taco trucks out front.
Oh, that's a good idea, too.
Yeah.
I have a question also, Terry. I remember talking last year after this event about how we could get more attendance from other boards, and would it help if we made calls? Or, you know, I just think especially for brand-new elected officials, it's a really... But for anyone, it's a good review for anyone. How can we pump up the attendance is what I'm...
That is a great question and a great idea. Thank you very much for bringing it up. What we will do is we will send you an email, like the text of an email, that you could forward on with the flyer to any contacts that you have, that are especially newly-elected officials or... And if you want to know if they were invited, just ask Mandy, and she has the list of all the people that were invited.
Through the chair. Kind of following up on that, in addition to the board members reaching out directly to other board members, if staff haven't already reached out to general managers and superintendents and encourage them to attend, or encourage them to attend their board... Encourage them to encourage their board members to attend. That would probably also be helpful. And the board members are hearing it from us, they're hearing it from you, and they're hearing it from the executive in their own organization, so...
Another really great idea, we did invite the general managers or, you know, the equivalent city managers superintendent for all of the elected boards. We thought it was good for the general manager to hear what the board members were hearing. But great idea, perhaps Willie could send out a special email to all the city managers to come as well. Yes. I'm looking at Fallon because she keeps his calendar. Yes, certainly he will be there, at least for part of the day. I won't take that personally, Andy.
Through the chair. The only concern I see is that this directly follows the cap-to-cap, and a lot of these guys and gals are going to be traveling across the country the day before. So depending on weather and how long the day is the day before, we might knock some attendance down. So just keep that in mind, too.
Thank you.
I'm coming back Tuesday. When are you coming back?
Wednesday.
You're Wednesday?
Yeah.
Okay, quick communications update. John James was interviewed by the Appeal Democrat for a story about the FERO final viability assessment. The story hasn't been published yet, but it's likely coming out soon. Our staff was also featured in some of the local news coverage during the procession for the fallen Marysville police officer. Our staff organized a community meeting on March 19th for the residents around Lake Francis to talk about the expected impacts of the upcoming tunnel outage. Approximately twenty community members attended. We've also launched an interactive project page, so people could go on. It's specifically about the tunnel outage. So if you get any questions about the project, you can refer them to our website, or of course, to our communications team. Last week, Kyle Morgato and Jackie Silman represented us at a career fair at the Yuba Sutter Fairgrounds. And today, Kaitlin Chow is speaking at an event to encourage girls to enter the fields of science, technology, engineering, and math. Upcoming sponsorships include the... You can tell I'm not a fisherman. Kokani? Kokini?
Kokini.
Kokini. Kokini Power Fishing Derby at Bullards on April 6th, and the Sierra Fund's 20 Year Celebration on April 16th. Our next board meeting is April 15th here at nine o'clock. Any questions?
Questions to the directors? Thank you. I'll start down here with Andy. Nothing? Renick?
Yeah, I just want to take the time to recognize our local law enforcement and first responders. It's tough for the whole community to suffer a loss. And talking with the chief, Kyle Hagstrom, about how it affected his first responders, it's pretty tough. So just want to recognize the efforts they put in and continue to put in, even though they suffer travesty after travesty. So the good news is that, you know, our community stands behind our law enforcement, and they don't have to deal with much of that negative type of mentality here. But I just want to go out and recognize them officially, so...
Thank you.
Oh, your taxes.
Dang it, I need that reminder. Wayne?
Nothing.
Willie's not here today, but I was going to compliment Willie and the staff that I believe one of our biggest issues is water and fish, and he's done an outstanding job over the last few months of organizing and working with the ocean fishermen, sports fishermen, on returning salmon. And he has more updates coming in that area, and I think it's extremely important for our agency because everybody's looking at our water. As you're aware, there's people out there that have said that right now, we're putting forty-five percent of our water in the ocean. They want us to put sixty-five percent in, and it's all about returning fish. And we're focusing on returning fish. Just wanted to compliment the staff in that area.
Okay.
So I have a NACWA board meeting tomorrow. It'll be hosted at Solano County Water Agency, and prior to the meeting, we're doing a tour of Monticello Dam and Pewter Creek, and looking forward next week to the employee appreciation event and the Mountain Counties Water Reception.
Great. I don't have much, but I do have an upcoming fundraising dinner that I'm in charge of because I'm commander of the Yuba Sutter Sheriff's Arrow Squadron. So I'm going to pass these out to the directors, and I'm looking for donations of raffle items and anything you can think of that would help us. So we have a dinner coming up May 17th outside at the Yuba County Airport. It's our annual fundraiser for Yuba Sutter Sheriff's Arrow Squadron, and we support the sheriff's department from the air, from above. So both Yuba and Sutter County and code enforcement. So anyhow, a few of us went over and made five hundred pizzas in twenty-eight minutes Sunday morning for the fundraiser for our fallen officer. And with that said, I'm going to adjourn this meeting in memory of our fallen officer, Osmar Redente.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties.